Stand by. And five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 10th, 2019, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is being recorded, aired live on LCTV, and livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement that anyone recording the meeting disclose that they are doing so. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible,天地无边， and justice for all.
First on the list of correspondence, the following correspondence will be recorded.
Memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at CTEC dated December 4, 2019, regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month Awards for November 2019. Long Meadow student honored this month were Olivia Charbonneau, Health Assistant II, Austin Munson, Integrated Occupational Prep. We also have a letter from Senator Eric Lesser dated November 20, 2019, regarding the inclusion of a study and report on the equity predictability and accuracy of the method of determining cities and towns' ability to contribute toward education funding in the Student Opportunity Act. An email from Mr. Mike Soucy dated December 5, 2019, regarding snow removal from the buses. And an email from Mr. Pete Landon dated December 5, 2019, regarding IT management.
Thank you, Ryan. We have a recommendation for the approval of minutes?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes of the November 25, 2019, school committee meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Do we have any visitor comments this evening? Okay, any school committee announcements or recognitions?
The middle school and elementary school robotics teams competed at the AgCon qualifier, and they made it to states. Three out of the five Long Meadow teams made it to state, so woo-hoo. So that's this weekend.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Yeah, they were, Long Meadow was, so there were five Long Meadow teams present out of 28 teams, so what's that, like, almost a, it was an awesome presence. I don't know the math.
Great. Congratulations. Any others? Moving on to business with guests. We are very fortunate this evening to have some members of the Long Meadow High School Boys Soccer Team here with us, recent state champions. The team had quite a year. They were undefeated, and this, they won their second Western Mass Championship in three years, and then won the first boys soccer state championship in school history, which is a pretty amazing accomplishment. So congratulations to them. The coach, Brad Miller, has been here for 14 years at Long Meadow. So he led the team and assisted by Coach Hanscom. We appreciate their leadership throughout the whole season and all of the years. And Dr. O'Shea has some, go ahead.
Yeah, no, welcome. We're so happy to see the boys team. They represented themselves, their school, their families incredibly well. It was, it was quite a ride, and I enjoyed every minute of it, watching your games. And so we're fortunate to have Coach Miller, Coach Hanscom with us, and so we invited you to come on up, and maybe if you want to share some thoughts, and if you want to grab a captain or two, if they happen to be here with us, they're welcome to come up as well in support, so.
I think they're gonna opt out right now.
Go ahead, Coach Miller.
Well, thank you for, I just want to thank everybody for the support. It's been incredible, and the support we've gotten from everybody throughout. I will say that Jay and I have been coaching over the years, he's been with me for, I think, pretty much the 14 years, and we've had a bunch of really incredible athletes, incredible teams over the years that I think deserve a shout-out right now, as those that have kind of paved the way for this group to kind of set the expectation level to where we are now. But, I mean, ultimately, it comes down to the players, and having a group that is talented, having a group that is willing to work hard and fight for a collective cause, and has leadership as well, and we definitely have all of that right here. So, congrats to these guys. I just want to say again, it's been a pleasure and an honor coaching this team. One quick note, I definitely personally have been accused at times of being overly competitive, and I'm not quite sure if that is the case, although I have a clear memory of 1988, when I was a freshman here at Long Meadow, and one of the best players on our team who was older than me, Matt Edgerly, I remember him laughing at me on the field because I had just been nutmegged by that gentleman right there, Ryan Kelly, on the old Cathedral grass field, and we proceeded to get a good thumping from them. And those are some of the scars that have helped fuel the fire over the years. So, thanks, Ryan. But really, again, it just comes down to the players and the team, and these guys have worked for everything they've gotten, and it's been a pleasure being with them. So, thanks for all the support. You guys have been great, and I appreciate you guys having us here tonight.
Anybody in the committee want to share some of my thoughts or messages? Would you, go ahead. You guys want to have the players introduce themselves? How about, so guys, we'll have you stand up real quick and say your name nice and loud, so the cameras can pick you. You deserve your moment.
James O'Connor.
All right.
Joe Carrick.
Max Aviary.
Hang on, you gotta show the trophy. Hold it up.
Mike Willis.
McGrath.
Billy Albano.
Colin Goodhans.
Kevin Rocco.
Rainbow Derrick.
Colin Ackitt.
Jack Kelly.
Aiden Boe.
Brad Machio.
I'm Bradshaw.
I thought the best thing I saw watching the games was how much, well, first of all, I loved watching Lowdon get beat. That was wonderful. That was always my favorite thing to do, so I think it was great watching him not only beat them, but completely outclass them up and down the field, all over the place. Everybody who watched the game said they've never seen Lowdon get beat so badly before, so it was really impressive. And then I think the last team we played was probably the best team we played, so that was a really impressive start-to-finish victory you guys had, so really fun to watch. Good job.
Are you saying something?
No question.
Yep. You guys were absolutely amazing to watch this year. My family came to a ton of the games. I have four little boys. I don't know if you guys realize how much of an impact you had on them. You probably don't, because I get it, you're in high school. But I think later on, you're gonna realize that you've really created this pretty magical experience for a lot of younger kids that you probably don't realize. Me not really even liking soccer that much, even though my family is like diehard soccer people. I've dealt with it over time. My boys are soccer players. I got it. I get to deal with that as a parent. But you've really created some really magical things. Your names, your last names are household names now. I mean, they look up to you in a way that is very different over the course of the year, and they had an absolute blast coming to all those games. And honestly, we truly appreciate what you did for the town, and really how you performed, and how you acted on the field. I mean, the way you boys, I don't know, you can compete, and you can compete appropriately. You did a fantastic job of that, and you pushed it to a level that was completely appropriate, competitive, and never looked like that team that you go, oh, I don't want my kids acting like that. You did everything really, really well, and you were successful. So, congratulations. I thought it was wonderful to watch.
I just want to, I've played soccer all my life, not nearly as good as you all. Y'all are amazing. But just to echo what Jamie said, is that y'all just, your character on the field, your teamwork, and just the way that you played together, it's just, it was amazing. So, congratulations again. It was really inspiring, like you said.
So, as someone whose son was on the team last year, it was really special to see what you guys accomplished this year. I know how hard all of you worked. To the coaches, I mean, you guys have established a tradition of excellence in Long Meadow, and I know that's always something as a coach that you strive for. And I wonder, Brad, if you can just tell us, like, over the last four years, where has Long Meadow soccer been the last four years?
Well, I think, I mean, the last four years, I think we've established ourselves as amongst the top in Western Mass and in the area, and it took a long time to get there. I mean, when we started out, I think it was our second or third year, we kind of made a dream run to the finals as like the eight seed in the playoffs, and kind of scratched the surface, but then wouldn't make the playoffs. And then we finally now, I think, have established where it's consistent, and, you know, it comes from the youth system, I think. It comes from, you know, having an incredible talented group of seniors, especially with this group. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard to pinpoint, but, you know, we've had some great teams in the past and come close, but this was a special year all the way through, so not much more I can say about that.
And I think it's important for everybody at home to recognize, I mean, everybody was trying to beat this team, right? Everybody knew how good you guys were, and they wanted to knock you off, and nobody could. And it was really impressive that you were able to make the run you did, with everybody knowing how good you were, and trying to bring their best game, and you guys beat everybody, and really just amazing the consistency that you guys showed. And I know a lot of you guys are going on to play soccer at the collegiate level, which is also really amazing and impressive. So, I would say best of luck to all the seniors who are moving on to really great things in the future. So, congratulations again to all of you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, Brad, you taught my son, who was like three, indoor soccer in the rec program. So, I have to say, I'm excited for what's to come for him. But no, seriously, I mean, thank you for all you did, and obviously to the athletes. I mean, what an impressive experience. I didn't get to see the games, because I have little ones, but I so appreciate the spirit that you brought to this town. It was nice, my oldest was on a sleepover, and I made sure to like text his uncle to say, hey, Long Meadow won the state championship. So, it was pretty, it was pretty epic what you all did. So, thanks a lot. Great work.
Thank you.
Sounds like an amazing season, and good luck to the seniors in the future. And also, we look forward to seeing all the returning players next year. Definitely high expectations. Hopefully, you know, we get as far next year. Everyone's really excited about that. And Dr. O'Shea has some certificates and pins?
Yeah, well, I'll give them the coach. He can pass them out in the hall. We have some certificates and a token of recognizing your accomplishments, and also noting that not only were you state champs, but in at least one poll, you were number six in the nation? All right, so that is, and, you know, we have obviously a lot of athletic and extracurricular success here in Long Meadow, but it's not often that we have a team achieve at the level you did. So, you know, we're fortunate to have a very robust, very active athletic program with very high levels of participation, but obviously you've distinguished yourselves as student athletes. So, congratulations, Coach. Thanks for coming out, boys. Thanks for coming. Make sure you thank your moms and dads who are here as well.
Yeah, whose house has that trophy?
Good job, guys.
No, we're just getting older. It's just the way life happens, you know? You keep on looking, going, oh my gosh, he looks so young. No, I think everybody except for Ortiz, and Rocco, and Kelly, and those guys are young. There's only like four of those guys.
That was very exciting, and once again, congratulations to soccer team. We have the privilege tonight of having our new town manager, Lynn Simmons, here, and as soon as it quiets down a little bit, she's gonna speak to us for a few moments. So, welcome to Long Meadow. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Yeah, so I just want to wait for, thank you. We'll close the door for a minute. Obviously, a tough act to follow, so maybe we should have thought about the order of events here, but we're really pleased tonight to welcome and introduce, again, Lynn Simmons, our new town manager, as Pramun just mentioned. It's been a pleasure to work with Lynn, and she's hit the ground running and shown an active interest in all things Long Meadow Public Schools. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Yeah, definitely a tough act to follow. No state championships for me. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, many of your faces I recognize, because it's been a busy month. It's almost a month this week, and I've seen a lot of you, been on some committee meetings with some of you, open space plan and such. So, it's been, it's been great. It's been very busy. We had a budget meeting this afternoon with schools to just talk about how things are starting to look, and we'll continue on that path very aggressively over the next few months. And I don't really have much prepared for you tonight, just to kind of come and say hi, and let you know that I'm looking forward to working with you.
We appreciate you coming out. Any?
Yeah, any questions or comments for Lynn?
Thank you for running our town, leading our town.
Thank you. How's it going so far?
It's very busy, yeah, but really good, but very busy. Great.
Lynn and I had a chance to meet along with Tom Azza, Paul Pasturzic, and sort of just having some initial budget conversations, and it's always helpful to have those informal opportunities that where, you know, where we have a chance to recognize each other's challenges and each other's opportunities in terms of the upcoming budget. So, it was, it was a very helpful meeting this afternoon, so thank you, Lynn, for that, yeah.
First of many.
First of many. That's it.
Excellent. Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate you introducing yourself, and good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is digital citizenship, and we'd like to welcome Kristin Sealy to present to us.
Can I sit anywhere? Do I have to take the hot seat?
Wherever you'd like.
Somewhere with a mic.
So, I will, if you, could I introduce? So, Kristin Sealy is a parent of children at, I think, all three levels here in Long Meadow Public Schools. And back last spring, Kristin had sent a heartfelt letter to the committee expressing concern, reflecting the concern that many of us have around the digital habits, the digital lives that our children lead, and use that as an opportunity to sit down with Kristin, and we talked about what we could do, and I think we both recognized there's a lot happening in the schools. Our technology teachers, our health teachers talk regularly with students about their habits online, and talk to students about digital safety. And so, as Kristin and I talked, we sort of thought about how can we bring parents into the conversation? And so, to her credit, Kristin has pulled together a coalition of parents that has come together on the issue of digital citizenship, and so she's here tonight to update you on the activities of that group. So,
Thank you.
Kristin, I'm gonna pull up the slide deck that you have, and feel free to introduce yourself and your work a little further.
So, I have a 16-year-old who's a sophomore at the Long Meadow High School, a 13-year-old who is an eighth grader at Williams, and a nine-year-old who is a fourth grader at the Blueberry Hill School, all girls. And so, I was a holdout for a long time getting my own children access to social media, and even longer before I relented on the cell phone, please. So, having been so impressed with Nicole Allen and her staff at the Glenbrook Spring Social Media Panel last, oh, there she, no, there she is. I thought, after speaking to some parents, I was motivated to step up, because we thought these messages are great for parents, and it's so wonderful to have those opportunities to get out and hear what our experts in our community are saying, but what about our kids? Like, what are we saying as a community to them in a concerted way? So, I rose my hand. I was here and working towards making something happen to that effect. So, basically, the good citizenship is teaching kids to be safe, and sensitive, and smart about their technology and how they use it. And the hope is that this district-wide partnership, we already have 20-plus parents involved, and then many community stakeholders, pediatricians, the police resource officer, Pam Chaplin. We have community experts, people who are writing their dissertations in working with technology and how it affects preschoolers, and how it affects teenagers when they drive. So, maybe other partners could be, you know, more than the school adjustment counselors, but others in our community who actually have a passion for this also. One example was Carrie Kennedy, our librarian here at the Long Meadow High School, who did her master's thesis paper on digital citizenship. And so, she sort of worked with us to help guide some of the messaging, and what is appropriate for the kindergarten through second graders versus the third through fifth graders. And then, we have our middle school experts right here in this room who deal with it every day. But as a coalition of community, parents, administrators, and the like, we're trying to teach our children how to navigate the world in which they live that is completely invaded by technology at alarming paces. But we want them to learn how to manage it, because it's, this is where we find ourselves. We cannot, you know, avoid the social media and the smartphone revolution and the gaming. So, how do we model behaviors, and how do we teach our children to be effective in this world in which they find themselves? So, what, some of these skills specifically, we're thinking about, and the way that we've structured bringing this to a wider audience throughout our three elementary schools, again, echoing what was already done in the middle schools. And I believe Tom would say that they started this in high school, so I didn't mean to leave you out. So, but, you know, internet safety is, you know, one of the pieces. Being smart about all of the app, this, you know, social apps and social media, the world in which they live, including gaming. Pitfalls to avoid, and those are things that could be, you know, even plagiarism, or what constitutes fake news. What's your digital footprint? You know, that, so pitfalls to avoid is sort of a wide-reaching branch to all of this. But then, finding balance, there are some nice common sense media tutorials that talk about, you know, we're constantly trying to find balance in our diets, and how, you know, you make nutrition choices, and how you can also, you know, create an image of a pie in your mind, and think about your technology use and your gaming habits. And then, I do thank Amy Stack behind me for constantly bringing in the kindness piece, and how, you know, sensitivity online, and this includes things like tips about, before you send things, or an email, a post, you know, call somebody, you know, think about what you might say. Maybe that person isn't having a great day, but before you just, you know, get on the phone or send a text, take two seconds to think about. I think the acronym is THINK. Is it, you know, thoughtful? Is it interesting? Is it?
helpful.
Helpful. Thank you. I missed the H. You know, and as a kind. So, those are things we just want to echo at intervals throughout our children's education. And in doing this, you know, our goals are to, as parents and as teachers and as a community, to, you know, model healthy interactions with screen times, and whether it's a TV, whether it's your computer, whether it's a tablet, you know, how to keep our privacy and our personal information safe, which is the data hygiene, creating mindfulness, you know, not just putting your life in an Instagram for the world to see. You know, what, using your internet voice as something meaningful, and, you know, sharing our successful strategies with other parents, between, you know, teachers and adjustment counselors. As a practice in moving forward with this, I have started to put myself out there in the community, and besides building, you know, coalition membership, I'm meeting with a lot of stakeholders, and I attended the District Attorney's Social Media Awareness Meeting, and they have, and continue to create really good information, and public service announcements, videos, messages, and just, you know, tip sheets like this one, that just talk about the apps, the latest and greatest social media apps. But, you know, when young adults see it coming from something with such an official seal, maybe it holds more weight than mom and dad just saying, you know, you really should think about, you know, this, what's the latest thing? Expose A app, or expose app. So, in addition to pulling people together, getting information that's helpful and disseminating it, one of our other activities is extending what's already going on in the schools, and making sure that parents, you know, know what that curriculum is. So, ongoing, we're just really wanting to share our resources, and at home, be able to, you know, replicate what's going on in our schools, and also outside of our schools, and in, with our Special Programs Committee, they're bringing all of this wonderful talent into our community, and a lot of people can't make it. What are we doing to extend the impact of that? Especially when it relates to these topics, the challenge success, the digital narratives, screen-wise, those are all such wonderful and important and really impactful pieces of this. And we, having the one night, it seems like almost a shame. So, we want to work with the Special Programs Committee and, you know, get that information shared and make a greater impact. And then, immediately, you know, we are trying to recreate the social media panels that have been done at the high school and the middle school, at least at Glenbrook, for the middle school kids and parents in their three elementary schools. So, to that end, we have volunteers who have raised their hands to be the liaison for our three elementary schools. We've lined up our expert panels. We have a draft presentation, working on some of these, you know, video clips and cartoons to hand out to the kids to, you know, make it fun, and not some, you know, lecture or another teaching activity, but more of like an interactive, meet the faces of people who can help and who are there to support you. One piece that I forgot to mention is the peer leaders. So, you know, this has been working really nicely from the middle school down to the elementary school already, and from the high school into the middle schools. But I think the District Attorney's Office had the same sort of setup, where they had four different high school kids from Munson to Palmer to Westside, and they were telling their experiences. And I think that's so powerful when you are a really young And I think that's so powerful when you are a really young elementary school kid and you see a middle schooler who says, "If only I knew then what I know now." And my grades suffered and, you know, when the high school kid is saying, "My parents make me charge my phone somewhere else outside of my room and I've been getting better sleep and I feel like I appreciate what's going on in class more." Just those little things. It's so much more resounding when it's coming from a peer than, you know, a parent. So, that is basically, in a nutshell, what this group is trying to accomplish. We are in our early phases. We're very excited. I think there are still a lot of parents who are really interested in jumping aboard, but I'm thrilled that the community has been so receptive and open and that all of our principals have just been really wonderful and I think it's worthwhile, given the numbers and the evidence that we have about the usage in our town and what we can do to make it a positive versus any negative.
Good. Just to thank Kristin for coming out and one of the phrases I've been using is sort of "by parents, for parents," right? And when Chris and I spoke initially and in my conversations with the administrators, one of the ongoing thoughts was that, well, this can't be, this is, the solution to these issues or the can't be placed solely at the feet of parents or solely at the feet of schools or you can't blame children. So, it really needs to be a combined effort. And I think that's the strength of this effort is that we have a group of parents that hopefully will be a resource and a support to Long Meadow parents. I know, you know, when I tried to help my kids navigate the digital world, I always felt sort of alone as a parent. It was like, okay, what is everybody else doing? What are the rules? It's, you know, the rules of parenting have been long established, but the rules for parenting digital behavior have not been long established. And I think that this is an effort to try to establish some sort of community-wide norms and expectations. And there seems to be some energy and some momentum here and I think the group is getting some traction and I appreciate the willingness of the administrators to support the activities of the group. And, you know, again, I hope that we can, that it'll ultimately be a great resource for parents in this community. So, Kristin, thanks for pulling this together and thanks for giving her the opportunity to sort of talk to you about this group and consider whether or not there's some role that the committee might play as well.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
As someone who hires, and I don't know if you do the same thing I do, Jamie, the second I see a name, I Google the heck out of the person and they don't even get in the door if they put stupid stuff online. And there's been quite a few that just trash because of the stupid stuff they put online. So, I think it's a fantastic lesson. Even when I was coaching college psych and recruiting kids, you'd see what they put online as high school students and go, "Nope, you're dumb." So, I think it's really great what you all are trying to do, starting at the younger ages. And I agree with Marty that as parents, because, you know, my kids have heard the lesson more than once because they haven't been brilliant online all the time. So, having everybody helping, I think is great. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you for what you're doing. I mean, it's really important work and I think, I mean, it's just so hard as a parent to try to do the right thing and we all fall into bad habits. And I think having a support group to help us remind, to help remind ourselves what are our good habits and bad habits and help our kids recognize that is really important. And the only other thing I want to say is as a college educator, it's important for everybody to recognize, like, when our kids leave LHS, they're going to be on their own, right? And so if we can help them establish good habits before they leave, then when they get to places like college where I'm at, they're going to have good habits and I can see that. The students who know how to handle technology, social media, they do better than the students who don't know how to handle it. So, if we can help them figure that out here, it's way easier than when they get off to college. So, thank you.
You're welcome. One of the things that I find the challenge is that we're overbooked, our time is of a premium and it's just, even if you're really good and have good habits, you cannot stay on top of what is new and dangerous out there without help. You just can't do it. And, you know, even the lifestyle applications like Life360 and other, you know, family calendar and tracking and organizational things, it's really hard for some people to keep up with that just because you have to input. I mean, it's, you know, if you don't have time to set your family up or to keep it current, it fails. And so I think if we can help share best practices, it's what works for our family and how we manage some of the challenges. Because, you know, I have lived in town for 17 years and have the luxury of having friends with kids who are older or, and now empty nesters and some new families don't have that, you know, advantage yet. And so this is one way that, you know, people can find each other. And we talked about working with the Safe Homes platform and those people to kind of try to bring even more people into the fold and, you know, evolve from maybe one age group into a more, you know, helpful substance abuse, you know, responsible, you know, group tackling other problems as the, you know, kids age and get through the school system. So, we'll see where that takes us.
Yeah, just, so Kristin, thank you. I mean, I know we're all have said it and just thank you very much. This is from, even the PowerPoint, it's only a couple of slides, but they're like just spot-on and simple, but, you know, super valuable, the leadership, the purpose, the focus, everything. I did have one question, though.
Sure.
Do you all have, like, a social media presence?
Not yet.
Because so much, like, I know.
Yes, we will. We will. And we actually have Shelley Warren helping us because the Safe Homes and, first of all, I should give Paul McNeil some props. So, they run the climate survey, is that what it's called?
We have Shelley through Mr. Landers. They have a school climate survey.
School climate survey. So, this all began basically out of the school climate results for the middle schools.
Right.
And so, using evidence-based data to try to, you know, really target your audience is wonderful and they have resources that obviously, you know, we, the average parent, might not have.
Right.
In terms of a web presence or a, you know, because we could do a Facebook page, sure. But, I mean, we're really excited to have them in our corner as well. And I will say that, you know, when I voiced my concerns, I really am so impressed that everybody's kind of come out and said, "Oh, absolutely, whatever you need and let's do this and make it impactful and make a difference." Because, just to give you a sense of the survey data from last spring, which will now be updated in a few months, it was 13% of the Glenbrook Middle School children and 15% of the Williams students said that they believe that social media negatively impacts their well-being. And then even greater numbers, 24%, 25% believe that social media negatively impacts their health. And so when you translate that to our kids, it's, you know, 82, you know, approximately for the first number, feel badly about themselves because of social media. 82 kids. And that's unacceptable to me. Like I just said, we need to do something to change that number because we want to make the relationship with technology healthy and fun and effective and make it for, you know, their lives to be easier, not to be, you know, helpless and depressed and sleep deprived. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from on it.
Thank you, Kristin, obviously, for doing this. One of the things that I think is another impact that this, you know, awareness can really have is when I was a school administrator, one of the biggest challenges we faced, both with, you know, social media kind of like coming into the schools all the time, but was more of, you know, when we were kids, and I feel like my mother, but when we were kids.
You walked up both ways.
We got our news from the TV when it was on, right? Social media is always on and there's a lot of things happening out in the world that our kids can't necessarily, even adolescents, they, their developing brains don't process those events in ways that are productive.
Right.
Unless they have the guidance of, you know, families and adults. And so, you know, by establishing like open lines of communication with children over what, you know, they're experiencing on social media, I think it's so critical to, you know, how do you manage when you see something that's totally jarring and terrifying to you and who you are as a young adult, as a tween, as a teen, you know, whoever's accessing. So, I don't think we realize the impact that though even, you know, just news feeds have on our youth. And so, you know, this is, this is a big opportunity to really have, you know, help all of us have good conversations with our kids and open up those lines of communication because they could go through the whole day seeing something really traumatic to them and not have a conversation with anybody about it. And so I think that's another big benefit that can come from this.
Right. And, I mean, again, I want to just reiterate that I am not an expert in this and I am deferring to my psychologist friends, my school adjustment counselors, but I do like the fact that the kids can see this group of adults, these groups of, you know, peers and know that help is there. And some kids may, you know, not realize, especially in middle school, I think, also you sort of, you know, the elementary school kids don't have the stigmas yet, right? But when you start to get older, I think it's nice for that age group to continue to see adjustment counselors, Pam Chaplin as a resource officer. I mean, they're so welcoming and so open and, you know, just to know that other people are out near a corner is worth it. It's really nice.
So, no, I, just last quick comment and then we can move on, but I can, this is wonderful. I think it makes tons of sense to teach people how to use it, right? Are we also looking at the usage and is this group a part of, hey, let's, maybe elementary school kids shouldn't be using, like, using any of this stuff and making recommendations to the schools that a fifth grader or lesser, I'll be honest with you, middle schoolers, you know, I think if we did a study, we said, "How many middle schoolers have phones?" It would probably be a pretty high percentage.
Ninety-three percent, I think.
So, you know, 93%, you know, and, you know, obviously that's a lot of phones. There's not very many that don't have phones. And same thing in elementary school and making recommendations back to the schools and saying, you know, based off of their research, you know, not one individual parent is what they think or not think.
So, we did, as a group, talk about doing a parent survey. It gets a little tricky with the kids, right? Because they're so young and, you know, it kind of falls into, you know, Donna, Amy, and Beth's court. But, yeah, I think the more that you can go with evidence-based data and tailor what we need for those groups, the better. So, my group will probably look at a parent survey and see what we can gather on the younger students from that.
Yeah.
You know, what we really want to be careful of is we don't want to dictate to anybody how they should raise their children. I mean, everybody wants their, everyone's doing the best they can, first of all, right? And then, you know, we don't want to get into the habit of telling people what to do and what not to do. And so, you know, but, having said that, I think when you could say to a group of people, a group of adults, "Did you know that this amount of time on a screen can actually affect your child immediately in these specific ways?" I think is powerful. And so that's the kind of thing that we will look into sharing. Because the Generation Z is, the I Gen, I guess is what it's called, is basically from four-year-olds to 22-year-olds.
Yeah.
It's a huge number, right? That's a gigantic age group. And 95% of that nationally, and this is coming from the DA's office, have smartphones. It's not access to, you know, something, but they personally say they have their own tablet that has, you know, access to the internet, a smartphone, a game, that's the other thing. I don't know if a lot of parents know that you can get onto the internet and, you know, put yourself out there to whoever is looking for you through your Xbox, through your Nintendo and, you know, whatever other platform. Those can all be connected to a entire universe of people.
Saw a story about a girl whose phone was taken away, her computer was taken away, her tablet was taken away, and she texted her friends through the fridge because they had a smart fridge.
Oh, yeah, we have a smart washing machine.
That's how she got online.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's a scary world.
It's hard to take away the fridge.
So, is that data that we would see eventually?
Oh, I think, oh, absolutely.
And I get, we don't want to be the nanny state, but I think you also got to kind of sit back and go, you know, very differing schools. I mean, elementary versus middle versus high school get very different needs and wants, you know, but I always kind of sit back and, you know, 30 years ago, they had smoking and non-smoking sections on an airplane. I mean, you got to kind of look at something and go, you know, what, within the schools, yeah, we can, you know, say what we think makes sense based off of research and data to make the schools better.
And I think what we noticed early, you know, what we've noticed for a long time is a lot, there's a lot of parent interest and a lot of parent energy on this issue.
Everything is great.
And so, you know, we're able to kind of collect that energy through this digital citizenship coalition and then we're in a position here in the schools to amplify that parent voice, you know? So, I really, I look at this, again, it's sort of "by parents, for parents." It's a way for, and it is very similar in some ways to the Safe Homes Network, you know, where it's a group of like-minded folks coming together on an issue relating to student health and well-being. So, we'll continue to update the school committee if you have any future interest in this. We're happy to periodically bring it back if that makes sense.
Well, and I would welcome, Jamie, for you to, you know, think about what would be the goal of getting the data? What would you do with it, right? So, you know, I look at it as a way to say, you know, as a teaching opportunity for everybody, but I would love, you can email me, you could say, "Hey, what about this?" And, you know, as we put, and why I say "we," I mean, the people who do this for a living, the people who actually write surveys and are, you know, qualified to do so.
I just think more from, you know, you get the research back, you hear what the, you know, the parents are saying and wanting.
Yep.
And we can formulate policy as long as the, obviously, the group, you know, agrees to create a policy or discuss a policy around it that can change things if that's what everybody wants. That's why I was looking at it. I mean, you can do data and you can research things to your heart's desire, but if you don't actually do something with it, who cares? I mean, there's a lot of research that goes by the wayside. Nobody does anything with it. But if we have it and people are really bought into it and thinking through it and talking through it, I'd love to hear from this, you know, often enough to kind of keep a pulse on it because I think it's, there's a lot of other things that are affected that, you know, or, you know, there's a cause and effect on a lot of this that I think has, kind of gets magnitude at, you know, different levels of school, you know? And I think it's a great thing to look at.
Excellent.
And I just want to say thank you to you for coordinating this and everyone on the committee. It sounds like a really amazing group.
We're growing. It's good.
Yeah, and it seems like you've done a ton already. And I especially like that thought you had about the middle schoolers talking to the elementary school kids. I think that would be really powerful.
Yep.
I like that a lot. So, you have a ton of great ideas and we all appreciate it, as do, I'm sure, all the teachers and administrators and parents out there and probably most of the students as well. So, we look forward to hearing more about it in the future. So, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Marty.
The principals are in attendance with us this evening to present their school improvement plans.
All right. So, we'll have the gang come on up. You might have to pull up some chairs and move some microphones. We'll let them get settled in.
We'll let them get settled in. Just one more seat here. We're usually much more organized.
Oh, man.
Thank you to the principals for coming out tonight. Thanks to the committee for giving us a chance to present our annual school improvement plans. And these will require a review and consideration and a vote by the school committee. So when I think about district growth and improvement, I've sort of carried with me three principles throughout my leadership career. The commitment to continuous improvement, the commitment to systemic alignment, and the idea that we can create more energy when one wheel turns another. And so through those principles, we hope that we can continue to drive district growth and improvement. The school improvement planning cycle runs from December 1st through November 30th of the following year. And the cycle is represented by this diagram where there's a period of plan development, the approval of the school improvement plan implementation and progress monitoring, followed by assessment. So tonight, we're at that sort of three o'clock stage of the cycle where we are asking you to consider and seeking your approval of the six school improvement plans. School improvement plans are generated, as you know, by school councils. And school councils have statutory authority that is rooted in mass general law. There's also significant DESI regulatory language that you can take a look at if you're interested. And the school committee has some specific policies in your manual. And the idea essentially is that it is a representative body of the school and it's composed of administrators, teachers, parents, community members, and when appropriate, students. And annually, that one of the main functions of a school council is to prepare the school improvement plan. So before we move on to the proposed school improvement plans, I've asked the principals just to share with you a very brief reflection on their 2018, 2019 school improvement plans. And again, this is not meant to be, just given the time that we have, this part of the presentation and the second part, it's not really meant to be comprehensive. We couldn't possibly present to you all aspects of all plans, past or future. But this is an opportunity to maybe provide some kind of a representative presentation on the plans, past and future. So we'll start with the 2018, 2019 plans. And again, we'll ask each school to identify an area where they experience growth and an area where there is continued opportunity for growth. And we'll start with Mr. Landers at the high school.
Thank you. So I would say a year, it's amazing how much work has been done and how much we have changed our verbiage and our priorities within the last year. It was a year ago that we started talking about the VOG. So our area of growth that we are proud of is the establishment of the vision of the graduate. The early work, the serving, the stakeholders, the discussion that followed and the ultimate establishment. And opportunities for growth, there are many we have, are discussing. And by the end of this school year, we need to identify a way or ways that we will give feedback to students and families on that. That's not an easy task. So that lies ahead.
All right. So perhaps at the end of the 2018, 2019 reflections, we'll pause and see if they have any questions on sort of past plans. Next up, Glenbrook Bulldogs.
Changed it.
Go.
I changed the logo to the new one and it must have changed.
I grabbed the old logo. All right, sorry about that.
That's all right.
So an area of growth for us is our homeschool connection to strengthen advisory lessons. So last year, we started with each advisor would send home a messenger to their advisory family monthly to let them know what was going on so that we can continue that connection at home. It really was great because it allowed for them to, if we were discussing something on empathy, we would let the families know that that was being discussed and then they could continue that conversation at home. We got a lot of really good feedback from parents on that. They really enjoyed being able to see what was going on in the advisories and knowing so that they can talk to their children when they get home. An opportunity for continued growth is infusing the SEL into the classroom. So we've had a website now for a couple of years on our Castle Competencies and it's all designed around each grade level, around the five competencies. And we've done a pretty decent job of having that, it's kind of like mastered that area. And now we're trying to really take it and infuse it into the classrooms, including, and just school-wide and clubs. So a lot of teachers, it's just an area to move on. So we have grade six through eight SEL indicators slash standards. We're having teachers when they're doing our lesson plans, they're really thinking about the student SEL objectives when they're creating lesson plans. And students are getting more involved in knowing what those standards are and what's part of the lesson that they're doing that's focused within those five competencies.
Wildcats. Dr. Gile.
So last year, our primary goal was to become familiar with the Castle Competencies at the simplest level. So a conversation with staff really took form and focused on the idea of providing those opportunities through purposeful advisory lesson planning that would strategically target the Castle Competencies. And then we implemented community-based meetings to also provide students with opportunities to have more voice and ownership in the competencies. In terms of continued growth, we really want to continue to evolve those two concepts. In particular, we created a menu of lessons within each grade level that focused on the Castle Competencies. We really want to finish that work. We recognize that's an area that can be further developed. We want to, we want to, again, further evolve the community-based meetings by, again, giving student voice and giving them ownership. And then lastly, this idea of what does SEL look like in the classroom?
All right, thank you. The Blueberries.
Not as exciting as the Wildcats, but no, that's okay. So it's always nice to celebrate when anyone asks us to share some of our goodness. So thank you for letting us do that. So increased opportunities for co-teaching with support from the principal, the special education supervisor, and allowing for more collaborative time. And it's not just the principal and the special ed supervisor, but certainly the whole staff that makes this happen. We brought in a link program at the start of last school year. So that was really important to bring some students back who were otherwise being educated not in their neighborhood school. So that naturally allowed us to talk about inclusive practice, which is the bigger umbrella that leads to, or that sort of hosts co-teaching. We were able to look at our schedule and find times for special educators and classroom teachers to collaborate weekly, many times during the week, and then plan for lessons, study, lesson design, implementation and assessment. So it continues to evolve. It's, we have more teachers working collaboratively than we have had before with our special educators. So that's, that's pretty exciting. We also were, we increased our staffing as we did across the elementary level with more special educators. So that certainly did help. Budgetary support allows us to do that, which is great for our students. And then an opportunity for continued growth, I think we're all looking at our wind block continuing to redefine what that looks like for all of our learners. Not just students who are approaching grade level, but kids who need to have some extension opportunities as well. So I'm looking forward to doing that alongside my colleagues sitting here at this table as we look at our RTI model across the district so that we can move kids forward and continue to close gaps.
The Cardinals. Mrs. Sutton.
So last year, we, I want to celebrate that we continued to refine and enhance the different components of the workshop model in both reading and writing. We increased the use of tech sets, which helped promote a different, or higher level of synthesis and critical thinking in our students. We had ongoing embedded PD with our literacy coach, Vanessa Vina. And she was able to set individual goals with teachers and teams. And it's really a benefit to have the coach there when you have new teachers so they can hit the ground running. So we were able to enhance the workshop even for our new teachers. We also improved the alignment of the units of study and reading and writing, looking at the standards, enhancing the scope of the units, and then aligning the reading with the writing. So all of that is areas to celebrate. Opportunities for continued growth, we do want to improve our achievement in writing across all contexts. And there's actually two paths that we're looking at to do that. One is to increase the opportunities for our students to respond to reading through more constructed responses and essays, which is an addition to enhance the writer's workshop. And also to increase the opportunities to respond to reading in the content areas, both science and social studies. And also, we are looking, we are using a program evaluation pilot tool from DESI. And we're going to be using those tools to evaluate the workshop model and take a look at it and ask the question, what does success look like with the workshop model? What outcomes do we want to achieve with our students? And what data points do we use to determine success? So we'll use all of that to help improve the achievement in writing.
Thank you, Mrs. Sutton. And the Wolfpack.
So areas for growth for last school year, we really wanted to build upon our problem-based learning using the math workshop model. We spent a lot of time with some of our primary grades actually over at Center and observing how that was working because they were further along in the process, the process than we were. We also made a large investment in the district for advanced math recovery. And I'll speak more to that in the slides for current school improvement plans. Despite the efforts and the great work that I'm seeing happening in the classrooms, our scores are still not where we would like them to be. So I see that as an area that we can continue to grow with the investments that we're making. Continued growth, the embedded PD as Principal Sutton just spoke to. I think we're giving our teachers the resources and the knowledge that they need to teach stronger and better writing instruction. We're trying to accumulate exemplars. Really, that's not existent right now because the state has shifted what an essay should look like so much in a constructed response. So it's an area that we've struggled with over the past two to three years during the shift from the legacy MCAS to the next generation. So we are building those exemplars with our literacy coaches and our grade level teachers across the district, really to understand what student writing should look like at each level. Beyond that, we are working with all of our grade level teachers to revise all of the Lucy Cockens, Lucy Cockens Writing Units of Study to embed some of this work into it. So all of our work in the area of writing at the elementary level is embedded with the units of study and the assessment to make sure that we are continuing to move our teachers and our students forward in their writing.
So thank you. That's a sort of quick reflection on 1819. And maybe before we move to the proposed plans, it might be worth stopping there to see if you have any questions. And it could be that some of the areas for growth, that the principals will hit on that with the proposed plans as well. But worth stopping to see if you have any questions at this point. Okay, if you don't.
Just a general question. I'm curious if you look back, you know, three, four years, how much do these things change, right? Are we still working on the same problems we were working on three years ago? Or have we solved those and now we're on to new problems?
Can I, as they're thinking, so I meant to bring this prop and I can't believe I forgot it. So I may have told the story. I pulled out the 1919 report of the Massachusetts. 1919. I found it in that cabinet over there. I was like cleaning my coffee cup and I opened it up. 1919 report from the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And they had three goals in there. And it was remarkable how their three goals lined up with a lot of the things we're working on right now. So one of them being curriculum alignment, you know, and, you know, it's like, it's sort of that elusive goal that you're always sort of chasing the opportunities to be more aligned and more coordinated with your curriculum. So I'll show you the book afterwards. But remarkable that, you know, we've come a long way and we're always making progress. We're always growing, but sometimes.
Maybe you want to think about digital literacy in there?
Nothing, no, nothing about digital literacy, but yeah. But it did talk about the whole child. It was remarkable. Yeah. So anyways, the question was, if you went, look back a few years, you know, do you see some of the same issues or am I framing that correctly? Yeah.
In the case of the high school, we probably had a lot of continuity four, five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, maybe two years ago. While there's some overlap, I think we're turning a corner. I think the VOG is directing that. We always have new students, so it's not like, education is not like been there, done that. We get new kids in, so you do have to make sure that you're engaging in best practices. So there's always going to be some repetition. But I mean, we're taking some bold steps. I think I referenced a little bit of this in here. But next month in January, when we come to you to ask permission and approval for educational opportunities, we'll bring anywhere between seven and 10 new courses. And that's pretty bold considering we usually maybe bring new course or two a year.
Other thoughts? Other questions from the committee?
I have a quick question for Donna. Hi, Mrs. Sutton.
Hi.
I was taking notes as you were writing. I know I love the Cardinals. Did you say y'all are doing a pilot program from DESI to evaluate, what was that?
The workshop model. So that it's, they're, we're using a pilot evaluation tool. The tool is to evaluate a program and determine whether the program is effective for all of your students. So we're taking a look at the workshop model.
So the pilot is of the evaluation tool itself?
It's the actual tool itself.
Oh, okay.
And you could choose what program you wanted to evaluate and we chose the workshop model.
Perfect.
So while Center is piloting that, the other two elementary schools will also be following the work that they're doing very closely so that we can, we thank Donna for taking that on. But we're certainly with Center on that journey as well.
Awesome.
Do you have a prediction as to what?
I do, but I'm not ready to share it. But it's really interesting. It's really a deep dive into our practices and it's going to help us see any blind spots that we might have. It's really, it's some heavy lifting. You know, we're working with the district management group.
Oh, yes.
And it's pretty intense. I think it's be well worth our time. And then that tool will be published for anyone to use for any program evaluation. That's what they're hoping for. So they're using us as guinea pigs, all the districts that got accepted into the program. And we have to give them feedback on each tool of the toolkit. And then they're going to use that, publish it, and then you can use it to evaluate anything. Math, literacy, social, emotional learning programs. Yeah.
Do you have, do we use direct Columbia Teachers College readers and writers workshop support? Or does that come from the state? Does the state have their own sort of program? Because Columbia Teachers College is the readers, writers, Lucy Cockens is their guru. But do you receive, your consultant, where is that consultant from?
We use mostly the things from Lucy Cockens from Columbia.
From Columbia, those are the trainers.
In fact, they've been going, Sue funded a couple of trips, right?
Not personally.
Not you, she had the money to fund some bus, some bus. And the teachers have taken advantage of that and some of them now are doing it independently.
Our coaches are really skilled.
Our coaches are really a lot.
That the coaches are so important to help us maintain fidelity and consistency.
So Kevin, just to your point, I think the goal areas may be very similar, you know, from years past. But as we, as standards change and as curriculum changes and as our students change and the world changes, you'll see, you know, those specific action steps and objectives. We might drill down a little deeper in, you know, in this area, you know, specifically assessing our practices or the programs. specifically assessing our practices or the programs that we're using. So that might, that's where you'll see most of the changes is under the objectives. But the goals are, they're pretty hearty and long-lasting, so.
So you have the full school improvement plans from each school in your packets. And our intention here is to give you a representation of those plans and hopefully show the commonalities across schools at each grade span. So one of the, I wanted to just make note of the, sort of the data that is used to inform the development and the assessment of the school improvement plans. I won't go through the list, but this is a representation of the assessment tools at the school, classroom, and individual student level that are used to inform the development of the school improvement plans. And we're happy to talk about any of those if you have an interest. So one of the things that we have talked quite a bit about as an administrative team is to, how to create coherence, given our commitment to CASL along with our commitment to the vision of the graduate. And we're at a stage, really, where we're simply introducing the vision of the graduate to staff and to the community. But we want to move to a place where there's some coherence across the district. And I think the conclusion that we are arriving at is that a commitment to CASL will drive the vision of the graduate and vice versa. We've had a couple of groups take, do a sort of a crosswalk between the CASL competencies and the VOG and have concluded that one will drive the other. And I think that when we think about the K-12 continuum, you'll hear a lot of attention to the CASL framework and how it's informed by the vision of the graduate. But as you, as you move closer to 12th grade, the vision of the graduate being more greatly informed by the CASL competencies. So they fit well together, and we'll have to continue to be very purposeful in trying to bring coherence to that. And I think hopefully you'll hear what I'm saying kind of represented in the school improvement plans that the principals will present. So the first goal, I'm organizing the presentation around our district improvement plan. So the first area that our district improvement plan pays attention to is social-emotional learning. And so we wanted to talk a little bit about the objectives that you see in the plans at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level. So we'll start at the elementary level and incorporating CASL competencies into the standards-based report card. So take it away.
Dr. O'Shea already talked a little bit about this, being purposeful with our, with our work in this area. So the standards-based report card committee, even before I was in Long Meadow, you know, they had been working probably five years, Sue, I think we had.
It feels like that.
So there were some planning stages and then implementation of the standards-based report card, which we are now, as you know as parents, we are in the throes of that. So what our conversations have led us to is understanding the learner behaviors in a way that they do align with the CASL competencies. So you kind of already talked about this, Marty, but just paying attention to that. So this is one change, right? We're still thinking about social-emotional learning, but now we're trying to make sure that we are aligned with the framework that we are all committed to. And so that is, that is CASL. Because as we progress, we do prepare kids right across the board, up, you know, for college and careers. And so I think it's important that we align how we are assessing students' work habits and their learning behaviors to the framework that, under which we're working, which is also sponsored, you know, something that DESI says is important to do as well. So that's, that's the work that we continue to do. The standards-based report card committee is meeting again in January to really flesh this out. They did do a crosswalk, as Marty said, aligning learner behaviors with the CASL competencies and even going so far for our conversation purpose, purposes to align them with the vision of the graduate. So the teachers are very anxious to get that work done.
At the middle level, we touched on this a little bit, but I don't know if there's much more to add, infusing SEL.
Yeah, we could add a little bit more. We have, we had a group from both middle schools get together over the summer and create a survey for students to take, an SEL student survey. And once we got that data, we've had our social-emotional learning committee get together and analyze that data, pick it out. And what we did is then created some focus groups, student focus groups, to ask them sort of how did they read the questions? Because after you saw some of the answers, you're wondering, how did they perceive that question to be? Because some of them saw it differently, which then would change the way the results would be. So we've had some focus groups around that. And our hope is that we'll be able to distribute those results to staff and develop an action plan around it in order to focus on improving our school-wide instruction under those competencies. Our staff also is planning to meet regularly to develop and establish developmentally appropriate SEL benchmarks for each grade slash age level. Because I think staff and students both need to know what is appropriate for their age. Because I think sometimes there's frustration around it, both from maybe staff and students. But I think it's important for them to see what is expected at that age. Because I think sometimes it's like, why don't you, I don't understand why their behavior, or, you know, and then you're like, well, look at, and this, this book really does help a lot with that stuff. So it's just like, you get to see where they're at at age 11 versus age 14, and it's such a big change in middle school. So we're really trying to analyze all those pieces and get that information out to the staff so we can help everyone sort of understand where everyone is and that they can, and then students also to become a little more fluent in SEL language and a skill-based understanding of it.
At the high school level, anything else? Good. High school level, our 11th grade wellness course redesign?
So we, as you know, we have been adapting what PE used to be to the point where we renamed it wellness. I would say that approximately 50% of the wellness course in 10th, 11th, and 12th grades are traditional, what we call traditional PE. And we have embedded all kinds of things throughout the year. We've also had an elective on the books for eight years now for junior health. Students just don't sign up for it. Students aren't coming to the course because they're busy. Their schedules are filled. We're going to bring the course to students. So we're going to embed it formally. It's not to say that things aren't already going on, a little bit quarter one, a little bit quarter two, three, four. We're going to formalize it into nine to 10 weeks of quarter four. And I outline in 3D, Goal Three, there's a lot to do in nine to 10 weeks, but they prioritize, had a lot of discussion. Rita Hawke, the department chair, with Megan Roy, our health teacher for 9th grade. And we're going to formalize that. And we think that it's a, it's a needed booster shot for our students. If you look at the data from our school, our youth risk behavior survey, student, or school climate survey, we're below the state in a lot of behaviors in 9th and 10th grade. In 11th grade, we either, we either meet that or in some cases, we actually surpass it. So it's been a lot of feedback over the last several years. We've tried to get students to think about finding a semester in their 11th grade year. They couldn't, so we're going to bring it to them.
So let's pause there, see if you have any questions on any of the ideas that were presented here. Or certainly, we can wait until the end as well. Questions at this point?
Nicole, did you, so do both middle schools have a social-emotional learning committee? Or is that one from both? Do y'all have, each, each school have a?
Yes.
And that's, who's on, I mean, like?
So we have meetings that happen, they alternate on monthly. And it's, sometimes it's people who can make it, but we have like a core group of people that come all the time. The ones who've created that survey, you know, our adjustment counselor, our school counselor, our assistant principal. Like, we have people that show up every time, but it's open to everyone when we have them.
Okay. So staff members or like other people?
Right now, it's just, yeah, right now, it's just staff.
Okay.
Because it's, it's typically right after school. But we're not opposed to adding.
Okay, I was just curious, who comprised the committees?
More students, yeah. Right now, it's, yeah. And obviously, the students are taking part in it more so this year with the focus group and getting their input on all that stuff that we're doing as well.
Just to add to that, I think it was two years ago, going into a summertime, there was the formation of a purposeful advisory planning committee.
Okay.
And I think that morphed into the social-emotional learning committee that meets periodically, monthly, I would say, throughout the school year. As Nicole mentioned, it's a pretty consistent group. But it also, it's open to all staff, staff who can attend.
Tom, this is a great idea. I mean, definitely looking at the data that we've seen from the close community group and everything, this is a great idea. So thank you to the high school folks for doing it. And I guess I just want to make sure I understand the implementation. This sounds a lot like what happens in 9th grade, just on sort of a smaller scale.
A booster shot, if you will. And built into, formalized into third quarter. For students who are taking men's life fitness or women's health and fitness, which is an 11th grade option, it's already built in. But it wasn't as formal as it needs to be in our regular 11th grade wellness, AKA 11th grade PE.
In this way, it hits every kid in 11th grade.
Hits every, every student.
Okay, good to go. The second goal relating to differentiation, our attempts to meet learners where they are and to make sure that we're monitoring and supporting their progress and growth at the elementary level. Alignment of response to intervention practices and math recovery. That's a lot of work in those two bullets, I'd say, so.
So we've spent a lot of time as a district, K to 12, really talking about and trying to understand tiered systems of support, what that looks like at each level, what that team is compromised of so that when we're talking about student success, how are we bringing that information to the table? And we've recently really partnered with Laurel Pelletier as a consultant to help us align all of our practices across the three elementary schools, the two middle schools, and the high school so that there's a consistent process in identifying kids, providing intervention for kids. And as Principal Steck said earlier, you know, extending for those kids that need that as well. So we've begun that work last year, just as the administrative team. This year, we brought in guidance counselors, or school counselors from the high school, literacy coaches, math specialists, the literacy lab and math lab, teachers from the middle school, to really start that conversation of making sure that the differentiation that we are doing for children is appropriate and the right systems of support to move them forward. At the elementary level, we spoke earlier about the investment that we've made in the advanced math recovery. It's, I really think, going to be incredibly powerful for future years of math knowledge in this district, the foundation that it's creating, not only for our students, but for our educators. It is teaching teachers how to understand math and how to understand early numeracy and identifying at such specific levels where students have gaps in their learning. And it creates individualized strategies to help them overcome those gaps. I have seen a lot of lessons over the past two months, direct teaching on this. And to see, when you think a child has such great math knowledge and then when you are able to break it down to such a finite level and understand where that gap is and what is preventing them from moving forward on a skill is pretty powerful. So that's something that, we have a commitment to make sure that all of our K through two general education teachers, but also special educators, are trained in advanced math recovery. And we hope that once they're all trained in Level One, Coursework One, we can move to Coursework Two, which is that next level of math that might hit some of our upper-grade levels. But it certainly is a large financial investment. But I think one that we will see pay off years down the road.
And so the AV, actually, it should be AV MR, right? Advanced Math Recovery. Thank you. All right. At the middle school level, Tier One, so as Principal Nelson talked about, sort of RTI practices and Tier Two supports, middle school and address Tier One supports and review and revising the district D cap.
Yeah, and I just, I want to start by kind of going back to your question, Kevin, about how have things maybe not changed or changed? And I actually think this is a great example of how, I think when you really look at education from a mile high, there's certain themes that will kind of transcend time, right? And one of those, I think, is this idea of teaching all learners. Probably in 1919, that was, there was similar terminology. So fast forward, I think what, what we're really looking to hit upon here is this idea of teaching all learners in today's catchphrase, differentiation, right? So in our school improvement plans, Goal Two, we really highlighted not only the D cap, but this idea of response to intervention, the multi-tiers, the multi-tiered systems of support. And how are we really providing instruction to meet the needs of all of our learners? The D cap is a tool that has been in existence for quite some time. We really, last year, I think, kind of began to roll up our sleeves and look at the, the older document to see how we needed to address it, revise it, edit it, to be more reflective of today's learners. So that's really a driving goal of ours, is to have that revised, vetted by teachers, educators, and then really look to have a stamp of approval put on that. We're thinking by the end of this academic year, so.
And just a quick side note, D caps are, it is a?
No, I apologize.
No, no, it's a, sort of a statutory requirement that all districts have a working D cap as a way to ensure that all children can access strategies to meet them where they are as learners. So thank you for that. Dr. Geil, at the high school level, we've talked a lot about having, ensuring that students have, are engaged in many different ways and maybe a preview of some of the course offerings that are to come and how they represent potentially deeper learning opportunities for kids.
So I don't want to insult the good work of the current students and teachers that they're doing in deeper learning because there's, I would argue, a lot of it going on. But a word that's been used here tonight has been purposeful. So we're being, trying to be very purposeful to take the spirit of the vision of the graduate and how does that, how do we parlay that into courses and opportunities for students? So a lot of discussion about that in September and October through teachers and department chairs and administrators. And we're excited to have a few courses. I mentioned three here. I mentioned an introduction to engineering course, an environmental science course. We have an AP environmental science course, but we want to create options for students who are passionate about that, who are excited about that. That is obviously topical opportunity in STEM and create more opportunities for students. And then an advanced course in applied topics in CompSci. It's probably what the title is going to be. But we have computer science, we have AP computer science, but we have a lot of students who stop there and don't have anywhere else to go. And feedback from some of our graduates said it would be nice to have that. So even though there are other courses, I mention those because those are all courses that will have application built in, hands-on learning, deeper learning. And then we're being, again, purposeful in trying to bring more opportunities to students to think about career and college opportunities and how it relates to their learning, increased shadowing opportunities. Those things exist in courses, but we started by documenting what exists already, clarifying that, cross-pollinating from departments and teachers and letting, being very purposeful, we've got to find a better, another word, but purposeful about celebrating where that exists already and then creating more opportunities. And lastly, an internship course, which is stepping outside the box and which is going to look at given opportunities to seniors to leave Long Meadow High School. We'll tell you a little bit more in January about that. That structure, we're dialoguing about that right now. But where the student could leave anywhere between two and four blocks a day during their senior year. And we plan on having that being a semester opportunity, one in the fall, another one in the spring. And we have, we're gauging in a small pilot, as you know. But I'd be interested in bringing back a few students later in the year just to have them share what they learned. It's, it's been some really interesting, really cool stuff that they've done. So those are things that we're being, we're trying to, trying to make happen for students at LHS.
So you'll, you'll learn more. Tom will come back in January to discuss the, any new course proposals. proposals and seek your vote on that as well. And so, you'll learn more about that. But any questions on any of, anything that was mentioned on this slide?
Go ahead. Ladies first, go ahead.
Beauty before age.
All right. I just need to be educated on one thing, because I sat here and thought about it, but I have no idea what you're talking about. Math recovery, what does that practically mean? Like, what do you, I don't know what that means.
So, it is...
Maybe everybody else does, but I do not.
Something that regardless of what curriculum we're using. So, if we're right now, we're a math expressions district. Let's say in three years from now, we're something else. We can still use advanced math recovery. So, it's, it is teaching educators and students the basic numeral sense of numbers. How do numbers go together and come apart? So, decomposing, composing numbers. It's sequencing numbers, things that to us as adults are so obvious that require such explicit teaching for children to understand. And it's breaking it down at such a simple level that it's going to identify those skill gaps at such an early stage, so that they're not going to get to third grade without knowing how to subtract two-digit numbers. They're going to pick up on those skill gaps at the earliest level of their education and develop strategies that are individualized for every single student. So, you and Gianna might be in one group, and you guys might be working on two different, like, individual strategies that are within that same component. So, maybe making the number five, can you do, you know, can you do it right away, or are you still counting on your fingers in kindergarten? And that's how basic it can be, but it's amazing how hard it can be to catch that without really breaking it down to this level.
And that's why it's recovery. It's really a terminology that I wasn't quite...
It's recovery, because they should have had these skills already that that unit has passed on, and those children still don't have those skills. They don't have those strategies to be able to make that sense of numbers.
To go to the next, okay, go ahead.
You get sense that it's sort of a standards-based approach. I like the way you said that, Dr. Nelson, that, you know, you, just because the unit has passed on, that doesn't mean you're passing on the learner, right? You're making sure that they've got the skills to be successful down the road, so. Well said. Other questions on this slide at all?
So, for Mr. Landers, I, and thank you for, earlier, we were chatting about the different questions that I had, but it just occurred to me, with the deeper learning opportunities, what's your community, like, what's the community service component of the high school? Like, is there a requirement? And how does that, like, because I'm thinking, those are really cool opportunities for this deeper learning, but I just don't know enough about what's required in community service.
So, this is a community with students who engage in a myriad of community service opportunities. We had a debate probably a decade ago whether we should make it a mandatory class, or whether we should try to capture what's already happening. Out of that came what we now have as a CSL class, Community Service Learning, which I would argue is a current example of deeper learning and engagement with the community. So, that's one opportunity. I don't want to take away all the, all the service clubs that our students are involved in, Key Club being the largest, but we have five or six service clubs, TriM, where music students, you know, mentor younger students. So, that's an example of deeper learning. The internship, I don't know if I understand your question. The internship course itself is going to try to create opportunities for students to go out into businesses, nonprofits, see how the real world works, see how, interface with customers, see how people running businesses and entities act in front of the customers and when the customers are not there, and everything in between.
Yeah, no, I wasn't trying to even touch on the internship question. I really just didn't know if community, like, I know kids do community service through the high school, but I didn't even know that there was a community service learning class.
It is.
And is it, and I also didn't know if it was, like, like, at Renaissance, kids have to do a certain number of community service hours. So, that's not mandatory.
Not mandatory, it's a graduation requirement. Again, that came out of the dialogue and the data, and it happened about a decade ago. The idea was, our students are organically doing it on a bunch, on many levels. If you require them to do that, is that going to replace what they're already doing? Is that going to take away student choice? And is that going to take away, if you put it in form of a required class, is that going to take away a class that a student might want to take? Good or bad, that was the discussion at the time. And, but out of that came a commitment that we have to create an opportunity for either students who have not engaged in community service, or students who are particularly passionate. So, it's a, just, Community Service Learning is a semester course for seniors. Seniors, in most cases, leave this campus. In a few cases, they work in our life skills rooms or around campus beautification, but 95-plus percent physically leave here. Some of that is in other LPS schools, Springfield schools, nonprofits, Deacon Animal Center, for instance. And a component of that is they get to choose their project.
Okay.
To the extent that they can make it happen, we want to let students kind of pick what community service they're going to engage in. We moved that course from a year-long course to two semesters, probably three years ago, because the feedback from our seniors were, we'd love to take it, but we'd love to also dip our toes into another semester of maybe a forensic science or this or that. So, we have seen, while the number of students in that class stays the same, the kids in the class, we've seen more seniors be able to engage in that if we made it a semester. So, it's good, it's going to continue, it's kind of a mini internship, and we use that kind of as a model. We're kind of making this up as we go along in the internship class, year one. Does that answer?
Yeah, I, thank you. You went above my question, but yeah, really, the community service, because it is such a, you know, you're talking about deeper learning opportunities, and I just wanted to learn more about the community service here.
Do I have any questions? I just had a quick question about the differentiation goal itself. It's, looks like the high school one does include all learners, but the elementary and middle school ones, I feel like maybe could include additional parts of the population in the school. I know that it's, it's super tricky, but I didn't know if that was something that would be focused on as well.
Yeah, and so, a D cap ought to, D caps ought to be sort of present for all students. You know, in other words, that they're to assist students who need to access the curriculum, and it might be that they want to access it in ways that help them advance as learners. The, I think what we're seeing here, too, is that this is sort of a representative sample. I think I heard Mrs. Steck say earlier that, kind of looking at the wind block to make sure that there's opportunities for all learners there, so that if students need reinforcement, it's an opportunity. But if they have a, need an opportunity to dive deeper, wind block would provide that as well. So, that's an ongoing, that's an ongoing opportunity for us to sort of redefine and reshape the wind block, I think. But anything else that you guys might cite?
The tiered systems of student support work that we're doing, that we really are engaged in this year, is looking to make sure that we are reaching all learners, not only those that are struggling, but those that do need to go deeper into whatever it is that they're focused on and interested in. So, I hope that that's the outcome of some of our work. I think that's our goal and objective in that work. But again, we're so early into it that we're still just answering internal questions.
I didn't want to suggest that you guys weren't focusing on all the students, because I, of course you are. I just didn't know if it was, it just didn't come across as clearly, or maybe for people at home, if they just saw it on the, you know, Goal 2 differentiation, because that goes, runs the gamut of a lot of students. And I don't know if they have a lot of D caps?
Well, I think one of the, one of the conclusions that we have come to is that a D cap isn't attached to a student, really, but it's more a, an approach to ensure that all kids can access quality instruction, quality Tier 1 instruction. And so, that's why, you know, we've been looking at models from across the state, model D caps, and seeing how they might apply here in Long Meadow. And the idea is to kind of get some feedback from staff at some point before the document is finalized. But it really articulates an approach to instruction that ensures that every kid gets what they need, regardless of ability, motivation, that kind of thing. Yeah. The, the third goal around curriculum alignment, we can maybe hit on this quickly, and then there might be some general questions that the committee has about things that aren't, we didn't necessarily talk about or are elsewhere in your plan. But, so we'll try and move through this slide efficiently. Elementary objectives, end-of-unit assessments, and writing calibration.
So, students explore different genres through the units of study, and each unit has an assessment in both reading and writing. So, the teachers are always analyzing the writing, but there's going to be a much more intentional focus and analysis of the students' writing on at least two end-of-the-unit assessments. And what that looks like is the teachers and coaches are going to calibrate the expectations and collect exemplars at each grade level. And their goal is to build a library of exemplars for teachers to draw from when analyzing work and planning for instruction, and also look for trends in writing to drive the instruction, and to hopefully maybe enhance the scope of the units based on the findings they discover. Is that quick enough?
Thank you. At the middle level. Efficient, efficient. Middle level, standards-based teaching and learning. Who would like to? Go ahead.
All right. So, our goal across the middle schools is to study, identify, and adopt best practices associated with standards-based teaching and learning. So, we are really just in the beginning stage of this. So, back in, it was September, early October, Neil and I, along with a handful of our staff, attended a workshop on standards-based. And then we took it back, and on October 15, PD Day, we did sort of a foundational introduction to it with our staff over three sessions. And then, we gathered a lot of feedback from our staff on it, which we're still kind of going through and picking out questions they have, or where they're at, and their thoughts on things, and the questions they still have. So, with that, the next step is that we want to form a standards-based teaching and learning committee. And that committee will research, review, and analyze best practices, conduct focus group sessions on school and district grading practices. We're going to build, you know, from the above a rational purpose for change. And, oh, sorry, that's your...
Look at professional development and what that means, make recommendations, identify outside resources or consultants that would be beneficial to us, conduct site visits, do interviews of administration, teachers that currently are subscribing to these practices. And then, lastly, make sure we appreciate the journey the elementary schools have been on, and to really glean all we can from our colleagues moving forward, so that we have a really solid understanding of what the journey has looked like for them, and then what is it going to look like for us.
Thank you. And then, lastly, at the high school, peer-to-peer classroom observations. Mr. Landers?
So, we've been very intentional over the last five years to make the transition better. We, the reason for, we saw many ninth graders having, in October and November, having problems with having to change a class that they weren't prepared for, they weren't right for. If you move one piece of the puzzle in a student's schedule, you move several, and that's pretty stressful in the middle of, in your first few months in ninth grade. So, we worked on it, we've been focusing on that. That's been gone in two directions, kind of programmatic. We now, we started inviting ninth graders up in February to the high school as part of the education process about what courses are offered and what high school can be like. We continued what we'd had for years, about eighth-grade parent night. We added and enhanced every year what we did at that, at that day that we invited them up in February. We enhanced that ninth-grade orientation, where invite them in a day before everyone else. So, that continues. The other part of that was getting teachers together to work together, eighth and ninth-grade teachers. So, that has been going on in different ways, mostly in PD, PD days, where they get together and they present information, and they look at an assignment of ninth grade, and the eighth graders ask, eighth-grade teachers ask questions, and vice versa. Over the next year, we're kind of challenged this year with PD having to be so knee-ask-based. You guys are working on a lot of things, but we, middle school and high school, we're still committed to doing it. So, this, over this next year, it's going to be peer-to-peer observations. Eighth-grade teachers and ninth-grade teachers watching each other teach, followed by kind of meaningful conversations. How does this help? How can we help students? What does this mean? How do I understand an eighth-grade learner as a, from a ninth-grade teacher point of view, and vice versa. So, it's a continuation of our commitment, but it's in a little different form.
So, thank you. We're open to questions on this slide, anything we talked about here, or perhaps just in general, things that you have questions about in the school improvement plans, things you've seen, things you've observed, the things that need some clarity, perhaps things you haven't seen that you wish you had seen. So, we're ready and willing to answer any and all questions.
I have one about the most recent thing. So, for the peer-to-peer observations, are you, have you created or using the same observation tool?
Not yet. There's no, there's no one tool. You know, there's a little bit of trust letting somebody in your classroom. You check your ego at the door, you say, "Come on in", you observe me in a non-evaluative way. So, I can't say that there's one particular tool. There are some best practices that they've chatted about over the last two years, and they're going to try to see that. For instance, they're going to see, you know, and it's, it's going to focus on English and social studies teachers. So, they're going to look at writing. They're going to focus in on writing in English, for example. How do you introduce a topic? How do you, how you get a hook? You know, to what extent do you allow for student choice, things like that. If a tool is developed, I'll, I can happily bring it forward. It's organically happening. We want to support that. So, we didn't, I didn't give them a tool to necessarily, and principals didn't give them a tool at this point. Doesn't mean it won't develop. It would be amazing if it organically developed by them. But at this point, it's, it's observation, and then structured conversation afterwards about what did you do before this? What are you going to do after this? What do you see, you know, do you, what do you see them grow from October to December to March, in both, from both the eighth grade and the ninth grade perspective?
I'm just bringing this up because, as a principal of 6 to 12 school, I have middle school and high school teachers observe each other every, all the teachers go on a learning walk every other week. And this was the first year we could do it, because it's the first year we've actually physically been in the same building. And we started with a tool that's probably been changed three times so far. But led by coaches, the teachers are the ones changing it. So, having a desired focus for the walks, and then being very specific about their feedback. You're right about them all being very nervous in September, they didn't like it. But once the trust was built amongst the teachers, they've been much more open to it. So, it's been a very positive experience for them. But they adjusted what they were giving feedback about. So, it's really important for everybody to know, if you're teaching, I want to know what you're coming to look for. And if I have no clue what you're coming to look for, that's even scarier. So, my suggestion would be to be explicit about what you're asking them to go look for, and have everyone be aware of it. Just taking that mystery away is beneficial to the teachers, I think.
Yeah, I agree. And I agree. I think the trust has been built over the last couple of years. Give a lot of credit to middle school curriculum leaders and high school department chairs. But if there's a particular tool you used, I would love to have it.
We made ours and changed it, but I'd share with you.
Yeah, but if there's a decent iteration right now, we would look at it. It's a great idea.
Sure, I'll share with you.
I'll echo that, because we have the same practice in the district that I worked in, and we had teachers run their own instructional rounds, and we used instructional rounds for, for teachers by Richard Elmore and a group from Harvard. It's a, it's a great book, Instructional Rounds in Education. And we did the same thing. We built our own, we iterated over time. We started at the district level, and then we got, you know, then we got down to the school level, and it happens all the time organically. It is uncomfortable at first, but once they see the value in hearing from their peers and getting feedback and getting, you know, getting, you know... and getting feedback and getting, you know, getting, you know, ideas about, oh, yeah, I could infuse that next time. It really becomes quite a, people ask for it, like, what are we doing our next visible learning visit? And that's what we used to call it. And then, can I jump in?
Of course.
Okay. I'm really excited about the writing because one of my questions going into this year and also from the data review of what's, you know, the 2019 scores in particular is, I know it's only two parts of the English Language Arts Assessment, but, you know, the idea development and the two essays that students write, in, across all levels, it seems to be the lowest performing area for Long Meadow students. And this is not a criticism. It's just an aha, like, how can we support our kids to, you know, get to that, that original idea development and, you know, what's, what can come from that? So just because I, you know, and I thank the elementary school for really focusing on this. I know that at Blueberry, it looks like, you know, you're focusing on like the language conventions mostly. But if we, if I can, you know, make a plea that like communication being one of the critical pieces of the vision of the graduate writing is such a critical skill. So the more we can have our kids practice, the better. And I love the fact that you're evaluating the readers and writers workshop because while it's a, it's an amazing program and I am not saying anything bad about it, it's just, it's a matter of how do you, how do you really do it right? And I was in a district where there was lots of challenges with that. And so I think, I think you're on completely the right track and sort of looking into that. But writing is, is something that I, you know, I think we're all pretty passionate about. We want our kids to be able to communicate effectively and well. And so I would just, I just thought it was important to highlight that idea development part that's pretty critical for our kids. So thank you for highlighting that. I appreciate that.
Just wanted to say something.
Oh, of course.
So I know that SEL is a district goal, but like, thank you all very much for really actually integrating it, focusing on it. I mean, it's like, you know, I was reading, you know, when you read through the plans and just, you know, the pieces that you're putting together, you're aligning it with other curriculum. It's just, it's huge because, you know, and Kevin, I would say this is one of those things that, you know, within the last three years even, has just blossomed. Each administrator, I know I've talked to each one of you about different things in terms of the SEL components. So I just really wanted to say thank you for really actually doing the work behind it, not just, you know, writing it on paper, but actually, you know, really actually doing it. So thank you.
Just again, same thing. Thank you for your hard work. I mean, it's clear that a lot of work went into this from you and your staffs and the councils, and so thank you.
I have another question. Sorry. So obviously, when we had our retreat back in, when was that? August? It was wonderful. We talked about encouraging you all to be like really creative and do what you want and we're going to support you. So I really want to keep encouraging, I don't want to bring up MCAS all the time, so I'm not bringing up any scores, but this is about absenteeism. We have chronic absenteeism has gone up, particularly with low-performing students and students with disabilities. So I'm wondering what, and if you can solve this, please share it back. I'll share with you my rubric. If you share with me a great plan for lowering chronic absenteeism, and I'm wondering.
You share first.
I asked my coach, sorry, I'm glad Kristen left because I texted my coach for the current rubric, and I'll share it with you as soon as I get it. But do you guys have a, what are you doing? Do you have a plan to address that very difficult thing of convincing parents to bring their kids to school every day? Particularly with our most challenging students, which are the ones with disabilities and the low performers. I think it's a credit to the teachers that you see the lowest performers are the kids with bad attendance because maybe if they showed up, they would do better. So what are we doing to get them to show up more? I guess that's my question. If anybody has any good ideas, please share.
I'll take a shot. I think it's, we have to get our heads around that. I think it's a, it's an indicator that we're being held more and more accountable for and just, we need to be better about identifying who the chronic, chronically absentee students are and kind of checking where their performance gaps are. And I think just understanding the report card data and how we arrive at the accountability levels that we, we got and then figure out who those students are and how we can address it. The communication is there to parents, I think, when, when students are, you know, we fulfill our obligation to send letters home when students are at the five and 10-day absence levels. But I think in Long Meadow, kids are chronically absent for a variety of reasons, some of which are similar to what you might see in a, in an urban district. And then in Long Meadow, we have some students who are out for other reasons that, you know, they have family obligations that take them out of town or out of the country sometimes. So we have to, we have to do a better job of understanding that, the chronically absent accountability indicator and.
That'd be good. That's a great point. That'd be good to know like who's on a ski trip or who's refusing to come to school. And I think we all know that once you hit 14, you can't get that kid back as far as the data is concerned. So the focus has to be on the kid at, and maybe adjustment counselors. I'm just, I'm coming up with ideas, but if they can identify a kid at day three or four absent, so you know who to focus on before they hit the magic number and become chronic and you can't get them back. It's not like you can remediate chronic absenteeism.
You know, maybe Principal Landers could speak to a program that is sort of in, I guess, the prototype stage right now. And it's a, it's a program to provide a bridge back to school for kids who are chronically absent, perhaps because they've been medically involved or they're, they've been hospitalized for psychiatric reasons or, and so he's reallocated some staff, some current staff, to have a sort of a safe place that provides a bridge to get students back to school if they've been chronically absent. I don't know if I'm describing that accurately, Tom, or if there's more you'd add.
So mental health, mental health issues are on the rise. It's been, it's a fact. We had to get creative last year because we had some students who were either engaging in school avoidance for a variety of reasons and, but sometimes they'd come to our, our door and say, "I'm here, but I'm not going to go to physics class." It's good to have them there. It's better than that they're not there. We had to get creative with situations like that. We had to get creative with showing empathy and compassion and support to students who were getting ready to go, maybe for a partial stay in a facility or returning back. We had to get creative in terms of students who might have had a long, longer physical issue. In some cases, it was a medical stay for, for life-threatening situations. In some cases, it was a really severe concussion that was having long-term residual effects. So Mr. O'Shea was very kind to let us use a room that was on the LHS side of the doors but had been designed to be kind of a kitchen space for central administration. He gave it to us. We repurposed it.
I don't cook, so.
And we've been using it for that. And we have some students in there already. And sometimes there's not a lot of students in there, but the students who are in there are in there. We chat about it. We don't just place a student in there, but it's, it's one way to go about trying to keep students here. We.
You had sent the team, Tom, to, I think, was it, so you may know, a team was sent to Newton, was it, to explore?
We looked at, we looked at various Bright programs. And we looked at Brighton to start. We looked at Lexington High School. We looked at Amherst High School, and they all had different versions of it. But we took from them and kind of made it our own. I will be honest with you as well. We've gotten more assertive on school avoidance. Sometimes you have to file a 51A.
Got your card emailed this week.
We have done that.
No, when I read that, I'm not making a joke. When I read that, I was like, good, I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're doing that. It wasn't that bad out. You shouldn't have been late. This is a short version of your email. I was, I was glad that that came. If that makes sense.
So, and, and lots of communication with parents, lots of honesty, supportive, respectful dialogue, but honesty about the importance of being in school. And then we have, we have families in this town who have means and who have amazing opportunities for their children and they unapologetically take them on trips. We need to, we need to acknowledge that that's a reality in Long Meadow. At the end of the day, the families are going to make those decisions. Some are amazing opportunities that they're learning a lot in. And so it's a variety of reasons. I do, I think that, I don't know if it was the principal or Marty touched on it. We have to look at coding. I think we didn't do justice. I don't think we coded correctly last year when we were being very supportive for some students who were in, getting some professional help for mental health. And we were working with them. We were helping them be educated. We're looking at, are we, did we not give ourselves enough credit for attendance? And we don't have that answer, but we're looking into it.
Thank you.
We've, I've tasked my school council this year with that too because that came up, you know, in our data, certainly for Blueberry Hill. And so that's something that they are very passionate about in helping just get some, some messaging out as well. I mean, it can come from the district level, but maybe that parent group, if you will, can also help deliver the message to, to some families, to our, our community.
Thank you.
To the students who are in the, let's say they're in the hospital for a certain, do they get tutors sent to them or how?
They get tutoring services if, if, mental health and wellness is first and foremost, but when they're able to do work, there's work provided. And we chunk work and we keep, we can, we can use, we can give incompletes and give them more time to finish the quarter. And we try to do all those things depending on the individual situation.
Thank you. Is it based on how long, like, is there a certain formula, like, you have to be in the hospital for eight days or?
Not necessarily.
We have to educate students for four hours a day in some capacity in order to account for a full day.
Oh, okay.
I think a lot of the, the activity data is really in the analysis of who's absent, why are they absent, how are we coding them, and then what are we doing with the students who are not really legitimately out of school. And so I think, you know, we looked at an easy way or for, we already looked at a list of students who are over the 10% mark based on the amount of days in school. And so principals saw that a few weeks ago. We had a significant number of students who have already been out and are headed into flu season and things like that. But, you know, at least for now, I think we're watching it from earlier on and address it.
Thank you.
I just have a quick, just a specific question from Mr. Landers, but one G about the ICE blocks. I think the students will be really excited about. It's actually something Armin brought up at either, was it our last meeting or meeting before, like someone put it in the suggestion box or something about ICE blocks? So I, my question was, and it's, could be totally not feasible, but when you say by November 2020, I was wondering if it's possible or, you know, I'm thinking if it's done it by November 2020, it won't be implemented maybe for the following year? Or are you saying you're implemented by?
Implement.
Okay.
Implement. So ICE block is, ICE for people at home is interact, individual or cooperative experience. It's individual learning time. Students can go to various places, library being one, for instance. But we, we got away from, this year, we got away from putting students into the cafeteria. We wanted, we found that there was not a lot of personalization. No matter how many teachers you put in there, even if there was a decent ratio, it was kind of so collective that, that nobody felt ownership. We felt that you would go in, an administrator, a school counselor would go in and say, "Can I see this student?" And they would say, "I, yeah, I don't know if she's here." Coupled with some feedback that we got from the LPD about safety and, and others, on other fronts that we were working, we tried to make an example, tried to make more opportunities for students with the idea that we think that creating different places for students, somewhere you can go, it's where it's silent because some students need that, some you could go where you can talk and be focused on work, but you can talk and be collaborative and be collegial. And also, we tried to, we're, we're trying to make smaller groups so you can get to know your teacher. That might not necessarily help with academic work, but it helps on SEL issues. It helps with other things. So that's what we're trying to do. Doesn't mean, I, we seem to, for the last two years, we've been trying different things and we're going to keep doing it. But we're, those are the things that we're trying to, trying to create. And there's some plan. If you looked at a tier-two option that I mentioned in here, with a retirement that's going to come in, that's going to be another, a spot that students can go in during their ICE block and they can get direct tutoring. I think we do a, I, we hope, we try to do a great job of supporting our students on individual education plans, but we want to help students, all students. And sometimes we felt, we do feel that we can support them a little bit better. And it's in, it's in line with what Sue and Marty talked about in terms of student support. So that's, that's one option that isn't available this year, but will be available next year and more opportunities. We're talking with Kerry Kennedy about can we tweak and adjust and make the library experience for students a little bit better? Those are the things we're trying to do.
No, I think they're all great. I was, I think the students will be excited about it too. I was wondering if it was feasible to have it start in September, the beginning of the school year.
So we're, so this year, we are using classes. What we're finding is we have to figure out a way, so, so we have already created some, taken students out of the cafeteria, like I said, and created. We have to get a, we have to get, we have to be more successful at convincing students to, to want to go to certain rooms, quite frankly. So we're, we're talking about that right now. You know, or can we identify maybe these two rooms as a place where maybe it's math or science collaboration? Maybe this is an English and social studies or other subjects collaboration. So the basic structure of making them smaller and more personalized has already begun. And I think it's just going to continue over the next year.
Great.
We'll do, we'll, we had an ad hoc committee last year. We'll do another one this year. We'll include students and get some feedback. What was the best thing about your ICE blocks? What could we have done different? Things like that.
Great. Okay, thanks. Thank you very much for giving all the time and to prepare and use and present. There's a recommended motion.
Can I move on the recommendation of the individual school councils that the school committee approved in 2019, 2020 school and youth plans for Blueberry Hill School, Center School, Wolf Swamp Road School, Glenbrook Middle School, Williams Middle School, and Long Meadow High School as presented?
A second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Thank you very much. Appreciate all your time.
Thank you. Thank you all. Nice job. And thanks to principals, thanks to all the parents and staff members that are part of the school councils. It's a, it's a very broad team effort. So thank you all for coming out. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be quieter than the soccer team.
Yeah, great. Moving on to the superintendent report. Dr. O'Shea will provide the school committee with their report.
Sure. Go into the package and hard copy that. So a list of, I'll be brief, a list of some upcoming events for your review. I wanted to mention that we have a PD day, half PD day coming up in January, and the focus there will be on mental health awareness training with a specific focus on suicide, suicide awareness and prevention strategies for staff. I wanted to mention that we had, had applied to the Kaleidoscope Collective pilot. This is a program that the Department of Education had sponsored and it was a way to energize and support deeper learning initiatives. There was huge interest in this across the state. We were not invited into the pilot program this time around. There will be other opportunities in the future. And though we were not accepted, it was a chance for all of us to think. And though we were not accepted, it was a chance for all of us to think collectively about sort of steam-driven activities and opportunities at the middle school level. And in the report, I provided an excerpt of our application to the state. Met this afternoon with the, the Adolescent Sleep Health Partnership. We had five districts represented, essentially trying to gauge whether or not there is some regional momentum around taking a look at adolescent sleep health issues, including start times. I think the, the group that was assembled wanted to go back to their committees and their administrators to sort of make some decisions about whether or not they wanted to sort of continue this work further as a, as a collective group. So I'll keep you posted there. Provided you with an opportunity, with an update on some of the technology work that Director Nick George has been leading. Huge focus on cybersecurity, cyber resilience, and the, the description is there for you. Just received a grant from, from MIA, the Insurance Association that we belong to, to help us conduct a cybersecurity risk assessment report for you at some point. So thanks to Nick for spearheading that and for Superintendent Maz's support on that as well. Finally, not in the report, I received a call today from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We are not on the board agenda tomorrow night for consideration to enter into the core program. And yet, I also, though that was discouraging, it was encouraging to hear Diane Sullivan from the MSBA say that we have been and will continue to be under, quote, "further review." It sounds like what they do in the NFL when there's a bad pass interference call. But this is a good type of further review. They'll, they, not all districts are in that sort of further review category, so I'm pleased that they are taking our application seriously. The window on the core program will open again in early January. It would, it will be my recommendation that we once again submit a statement of interest to address the needs of our two middle schools. So we'll have to talk about that at an upcoming school committee meeting. We'll put that on your agenda for your consideration. So that's it. Happy to answer any questions you might have on any of those things or anything else.
Questions?
Just a quick follow-up on the cyber resilience. I mean, that's a pretty scary thing based on what you hear in the media about companies and towns and cities getting attacked. Is this something that has happened to other districts in Massachusetts where they've gotten hacked and had to pay ransom and all that?
There's a handful of examples. Most recently, Chickaby was the target of a phishing campaign, and they, they had their, some municipal data was frozen for a little while. They had pretty good backups, so I think they were able to navigate through it. But Nick is going to be making his way to each of our schools to talk to staff directly about phishing. And Mr. Gergantis was, was a savvy consumer of a phishing scam this afternoon, as a matter of fact. And had the link, the link been clicked, it, it might have opened up some cybersecurity issues for us, so.
Pensacola just got hacked also.
Yeah, is that right? Yeah, it's, it's, what I'm told is that sort of private corporations have gotten better with their security, the cybersecurity, and so now they're going after the weaker line of defense municipalities and school districts. So we're tightening up. Select Board's very aware of it as well, and I think Nick may even be going to the Select Board to talk about this at some point.
At some point.
Yeah, so we'll stick with it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
And Armin, if you could provide us with a student rap report?
Sure. So we met as a committee last week to talk about this parking lot issue and kind of have a brainstorm session, and we came up with three different proposals that we'll probably present in depth next month when we all meet together. But in general, the first, the first idea Mr. Donkerly came up with, and he said that it could easily be a six-figure project, but it's kind of making like a new road halfway down grassy gutter into the parking lot for parents, or not for parents, for students and teachers to use to get into the parking lot. Glenn's plan from last year is an option, but again, that includes cutting the granite, which there's, there's a cost that would be involved there. And then we also came up with a no-cost proposal that just includes like rerouting the ways that the cars move. But we'll talk about all three plans more in depth when we meet next month. So Maxon talked about, two weeks ago, at the, at the school committee meeting, that, about like the tissues and wipes that weren't included in the supply budget. And Mr. Donkerly gave us an estimate for including those in the supply budget, and he said that it would be around $915 per year. So, yeah.
We'll be sure to have that reflected in our FY21 budget if it, if it's not already provided for. We will, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Brian, can I ask Armin a question?
Oh, absolutely.
So Armin, thank you for all that. And then, you know, I was interested in that parking lot issue. When you say you all are going to discuss, so is that your student group is going to further discuss those three ideas?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe have like a slideshow with a map and like show all the, all the kind of reroutes. Yeah.
Is that something that outside people can go to? A bit of a copy of it?
Yeah, I think, well, I think the idea would be to come back and present something here.
Once they look to.
Yeah.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes, yeah. So thank you again for doing that, Armin.
Great, thank you. There's no LPVC report. There's a meeting next week. Kevin, is there an update on the Energy and Sustainability Committee?
Next meeting is tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. And on to the subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee, is that today?
We did. We met earlier today. So the first item on the agenda is a consent agenda for building use requests. The agenda says there are four. There are three requests that, if you look at the fourth one, it actually is just a copy of the third item on the consent agenda. So there are three requests that we, that were recommended by Finance Sub to, for approval. And the fourth one, there was a fourth one, they're looking for some more information, so they'll come back to Finance Sub and then come to School Committee at a later date. So I don't know if you want to have the motion at this point?
Yes, there is a recommended motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approved the consent agenda for December 10, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. One abstention. Ryan.
My daughter's involved in one of the things, so I'm not voting for her.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
The next item on tonight's agenda is a request to accept the FY20 grant awards. Last meeting, you guys approved budget transfers for our grants and special revenues. I would say in prior years, you would have approved this first. It slipped my mind. We normally do this in September, and then amend the budget based on the award amounts. I realized this year you hadn't accepted the grant, so Finance Sub received and recommended the list of the awards. We talked a little bit about the difference from what was budgeted in FY20 to the actual award amount. A rough estimate is about $20,000 or $25,000 above what we had budgeted for the total grant amounts for FY20's budget.
There's a motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee accept the FY20 grant awards as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I ask a question, please?
Oh.
You're in. I want him to answer this question. What are our options regarding this? Can we not accept this one?
Yeah, I mean, in theory, the committee oversees the budget. So if you, as a committee, decided that the funds for the purpose of the grant are not in line with what the school district should be doing or the school committee goals, then you could decide you would not like to spend the money, we would return it, and any expenses would have to be moved.
But in this case, these do align with our goals.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted that out there.
All those in favor?
The next two items are, the first, the unitary budget report for FY20, although informational, was not included in the packet tonight, or Finance Sub didn't receive it either. There is, we're working on some payroll issues with our encumbrances that I wasn't comfortable bringing forward a report at this point. So I expect for the next Finance Sub and for a school committee meeting in January to have that available for you. What is in your packet, and again, is informational, is an update on our revolving account. So funds that are not necessarily included in our budget, but we receive revenue and have expenditures for in, under the purview of the school committee. So circuit breaker, school choice, the athletic revolving account, to name a few, are captured on this report as an update in terms of where we currently stand, in terms of revenue and expenditures to date, and a projection where we'll be at the end of the fiscal year. And again, subject to change based on how things progress. The projected balance is based on my assumptions. So that is just informational. The last item, as part of our report out, was discussion about the FY21 budget in terms of the development and timeline. There are a couple of dates coming up that I think the full committee needs to be mindful of. So the first would be a presentation of the budget to the school committee. It usually occurs in mid-January. With our dates of school committee meetings on the 14th and 28th, we're probably going to ask to maybe move the 28th meeting to the 22nd, the week before, which would be a Wednesday. I think we discussed six o'clock. To just have the presentation. It might impact the student advisory group, because I think you're scheduled for the 28th to come, so might have to talk with you guys also about coming earlier in the month.
Okay.
But that would be the first, so that we can present the budget to you and have enough time, if there are changes the committee would like, before we hold our public hearing, which would be the second date that is currently not scheduled. We normally hold that about two weeks after we present the full budget to the school committee. I believe we would be looking at February 4th, which would be a Tuesday. Again, it would be a special meeting. It would be off-cycle of the regular scheduled meetings for the school committee. It would be specific for a public hearing on the FY-proposed 21 budget. And then assuming once, if that occurs, then the following week on your regular scheduled meeting, the committee would probably approve the budget at that point or make changes based on input they receive from the public hearing. With the expectation we would submit it to the town by the end of that week, the 14th of February. So I would say plan for those changes. We'll maybe formalize them at our next meeting since it's not on tonight's agenda, but just so that you're aware that we'll be looking to rearrange those, those dates for the coming months. Then we had some, some preliminary conversations about the development of the budget in terms of the district and school goal, and how those might be reflected in terms of things that are going to be maybe asked for in the FY21 budget. So the Finance Sub gave us some, some input in terms of considerations as we're moving forward. Marty and I will be meeting with the principals individually over the course of the next two weeks, looking at class size, enrollment projections for next year, and any new programs or requests that they might be looking to advocate for. So we'll pull that all together and bring that forward to you in January.
Good, thank you. Policy Sub has not met since the last meeting. Evaluation Sub hasn't met since the last meeting. Curriculum Subcommittee?
Hit down a date, December 17th, was it?
Yeah, we just have to hit the agenda post.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so there's no ongoing business, no new business, no executive session?
I move that the school committee adjourn the December 10, 2019 school committee meeting.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
No discussion on that one?
Thanks.
Good work, Coach.
Thank you.